Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, October 18th. All pre-selectmen present. Town administrator is present. The recording secretary is present. And according to the benefit of those who cannot attend, to the public is Mr. Leo Mertel. Thank you, Leo. Okay, gentlemen, I have some minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 11th, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
Has amended?
Has amended, yeah.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I worked hard to try to find a few changes. You make me work very difficult every week. All in favor?
Aye.
Got the changes so miniscule. Okay, I'm gonna open up for a public comment.
None.
None. I'm gonna close public comment.
Do you have another customer there?
Oh. Okay. Sir, welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. My name is Pat Mohan.
Yeah, and they can call you the big boss.
Well, I'm one of. I'm a manager, but I have another boss.
Okay, we all have bosses, right?
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
Well, I'm listening to you review the report with us.
Yes. There's two different reports. There's the financial statements, which will be going over first, and then we're gonna go through the management letter. And just to give you a brief summary again, you know, I, we had approximately three to four people working on the audit this year, you know, I was overseeing it. And we're gonna be going over the town's financial statements. So while we helped to compile it, all the information in here came from the town's records. So we just assisted in compiling the financial statements. And then, as part of the audit, we're asked to provide an opinion on those financial statements to make sure that they're presented properly. And once again, there were no issues in the reporting requirement, so the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles as per prior year. So everything is going very well as far as the reporting requirements. Really would like to jump to page 10. 10 is just statement of net position. And what this is, is this is, uh... This is based on the accrual method, meaning that in here are your long-term assets, which are your fixed assets, and then your long-term liabilities, of which really the town is doing very well as far as, no outstanding bonds, no outstanding capital leases. Really, the biggest thing in here is when you go down, probably two-thirds of the way down, we see the net pension liability of just over a million, 1,111,190. And what that represents is the monies that are liabilities that are being passed down from the New Hampshire retirement system. So they have their audit done, they have an actuarial study done based on the unfunded portion of the New Hampshire retirement system, and based on the town's payroll, they allocate that liability down to you. Your responsibilities still remain the same. You're required to report your proportionate share here, but you're gonna continue as you go. There's gonna be no difference how you've been doing things, meaning that each month, you'll make your payment to the New Hampshire retirement system based on your payroll, and you'll continue forward. At some point, the idea is that the state's funding will get to zero as far as, you know, the unfunded portion, but that's yet to be seen. They've got a track record of heading in that direction, but...
So that's our share of the unfunded liability?
That is your, that is your share.
Okay.
And you're doing everything that you're supposed to be doing.
Paying into the system.
You're paying into the system based on whether they're group one employee types or group two, which is your police and fire type, those particular percentages. So the town is doing everything that they're supposed to, and this liability doesn't have a one-for-one effect on the tax rate, meaning that it's a reporting requirement, but you're gonna continue to budget as you go with the contribution rates that the state presents each year in that day review. The one item that is gonna come into play next year, though, on here, it's Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 75, which is other post-employment benefits. And it, this, this statement has been there. It was actually Statement 45, and Statement 45 is superseded now by Statement 75. And what that represents is the potential for reporting a liability based on an implicit subsidy, which represents the fact that for those employees that retire and are eligible to still buy into the town's health benefits, paying their full share, they do receive somewhat of a subsidy because they're part of the overall pool. The idea being that if they were out on their own, they may be paying a higher rate.
We actually have two retirees under that right now currently.
And what's gonna happen is, with Gatsby 45, we determined, we did an estimate a worksheet in-house, and determined really the town's liability at that point was not material enough to even report in here because it was just so low. But what's gonna happen is, the New Hampshire retirement system does have a Medicaid piece that is part of your monthly contributions. It's a really small amount. It's like, I think, 0.2 percent, somewhere in there. But again, it has an unfunded portion.
Medicaid or Medicare?
Now, you have me on that one.
Medicaid is for low-income. Medicare is part of retirement as you get into a senior citizen.
So it must be Medicare.
It must be the Medicare. And what's gonna happen there, and they've been accumulating it, and they've been taking care of that, but with this new standard, they're going to, very similar to the pension, pass down the town's proportionate share in the same manner. So you can expect that there would be a liability presented here, and then we may have to then revisit the combination of reporting out the, say, the local amount plus the New Hampshire retirement system amount here. So there may be an impact next year. And really, where that's gonna come from is when you look at the very bottom, your total net position of 5,793,309, it's really gonna come out of that number because there's no offsetting asset, and there really doesn't need to be. You just need to report that out. There isn't a reason to fund it because, since it's an implicit subsidy, it just really is, because they're part of it, the town wouldn't be writing a check to anyone. So it's more of an accounting GAAP requirement that you have to adhere to. The town, as far as their part, really doesn't have to do over amounts except basic understanding of the statement. There's gonna be additional footnotes, so the report is gonna be approximately three pages longer, and as long as the state gets their information in on time, there shouldn't be an issue. So, to give you an idea, currently, that the town's proportion right now is about 81,000, so it's not a large amount. And the expectation is, once we calculate under the new terms, the town's local piece could be about 160,000. So it's really not a dramatic impact on the 5.7 million number, but I did wanna bring your attention to it because...
It'll be shown up next year.
It will be. But the fact where you don't have any bonds, you don't have any capital leases, you know, you're in good standing with that, and the bond rating agencies would look at that potentially if you didn't go through New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, or if you did go, it's not gonna be a major impact on the town's ability to get financing. So that's the way I perceive it. So those were the major items on the statement of net position. If we can turn a couple pages to the general fund balance sheet. There's the three columns, very similar to the prior years. We've got the general fund, the non-major governmental funds, and then the total. The non-major is your special revenue funds or your smaller items, and then your permanent trust funds, those monies that are held by the trustees. In the general fund column, where our focus is gonna be, that's where your operating budget plus the addition of your capital reserves presented in one column. However, the capital reserves are isolated in this column. As far as the cash piece of the capital reserve funds, it's reported as restricted cash at 384,637. It's the second number down. And then, if you go all the way down, it'd be the one, two, three, four, fifth number from the bottom, you can see it as the committed amount, which means it's isolated from your unassigned. So while it's in that column, again, it's presented separately so that there's no errors in determining what the town's unassigned fund balance would be for, you know, potential future articles or reduction of the tax rate and that sort of like things. Overall, the town did very good. When we look at the receivables, they're very comparable to the prior year, meaning that the billing is going out on time, and then the turnaround time of collections overall is very good. For instance, the property taxes at 310,209. A year ago, that number was 231,908. So there is a difference, but it's comparable based on the timing. The next largest number that I'd like to go over is the unassigned number. It's the third number from the bottom. It's 355,880. And really, that's one of the measuring sticks as far as how is the town doing. And it's measured in a couple different ways. The first one is here, which is generally accepted accounting principles, and then the second is, as you're getting into it, the Department of Revenue Administration on the 535, the unassigned fund balance. The two numbers are presented differently because of two different ways to look at it. The DRA basis number for unassigned was actually 650,321. So it is higher than this, but that's because they look at, when you bill out your property taxes, they determine that it's fully collected at that point. In this set of financial statements, anything that is not collected within the first 60 days is deferred and would be in the unavailable revenues because the town hasn't recognized the cash yet. So you have kind of, this is kind of more of a conservative approach as to where your fund balance lies versus the state. The state looks at it and has always looked at it that way because ultimately, the town should collect those taxes based on the fact that you are doing everything that you need to do as far as tax lanes, and then ultimately, you can potentially deed the property and then sell it. So they look at it as fully collected. This set of financials looks at it a little bit more conservative, so that's where the differences are coming from. The next measure is, how does, how are those two numbers as compared to expenditures as far as one of the key ratios? It will focus on the DRA because they like to see that number at between 5 and 17 percent, which is a wide gap, but it really depends on what you have as far as the local area and what your plans are. So for this year's measure, at 650,321, the town was at 4 percent, which may seem low because you really don't have any bonds outstanding, you don't have capital leases, which means that you don't really have some of those flat overhead things that you really need to budget for, you're really kind of an operating manner. And then you still have capital reserves set aside in case of emergency. So while you're at the lower end, you're not bad. You know, again, it's a, it's a wide range, and it really depends community to community what capital improvement plans are basically coming from. So that number had been 5.56, so it dropped a little bit, but there was differences in the tax rate and some other things. So again, there could have been some impact. And I would note, just as you're taking notes, there is a footnote on page 31 that does reconcile between the GAAP basis and the DRA basis if you ever wanted to. You know, basically, we have it in here so that if the state or anybody else looks at it as to what, why are they different, it's in here and it's printed. So if you turn the page to, excuse me, page 16. 16 is the budget versus actual. And in the, we're gonna, our focus is gonna be in the far right-hand column, the variance with the final budget, the positive and negative, just as they seen, negative meaning that, you know, there was a shortfall. There was a couple shortfalls noted in the revenue side, but overall, not bad. When we look at the total revenues and other sources, the revenues taken in surpassed the budget by 98,689. So while there might have been a couple of, you know, amounts that were under, there were some over, kind of balancing out the two. And then the bigger one is when we look at the expenditures, the second number from the bottom, 126,594, is, that's after any monies that were encumbered to be brought forward, and that would be the remaining amount that's turned back. Now, the largest one is in the general government, the 108,000, but again, this is coming from the town's books. When you look in the detail, there really wasn't anything significant that really popped out, meaning there was a couple of items, I think two, that were just at about $10,000 for some contracted services, I believe. Most everything else was salaries and supplies related, you know, some over and under. But again, when you look at the totality of the amount of line items, that's how you got to the 108,000. And then everything else kind of fell in line. And then when you look at the very bottom, the total, meaning total revenues that surpassed the budget and the total expenditures, it was a positive 225,263. So overall, the town, you know, didn't have a bad year. Your revenue surpassed your budget, but it was a conservative amount, and then your expenditures were pretty much spot-on for not having any major emergencies and things like that. For consistency, that number was 335,000 last year as far as a total, and then the year before that was 57. So the last two years, the town has held pretty, pretty consistent, and part of that building of the fund balance has been really, the town hasn't used fund balance in now really two years. There was a little bit used this past year for an article that was $2,900, and then the year before was 68,000. But we go back a third year, it had been 242,000, and the year before that had been 240. So without using that money, you're getting that fund balance kind of back to where that bottom threshold is. So that's, that's not a bad thing. So yeah, you're at four. You know, DRA likes to see that at about five, but again, it's a local, you know, it's a local decision on where that number has to be. You know, you do have capital reserves to fall back that you don't need further appropriation on, but again, you know, it is a balancing act as to where, you know, things are. But overall, without having bonds payable, without having those capital leases, overall, it's not a bad place to be. So the next couple pages, you know, don't have really, it's actually just a single page because it's the agency funds, don't have a lot to talk about, but what the numbers represent are the town's escrows, and then a bulk of it has to do with the school capital reserve funds. And they're presented in here because those funds are held by the town's trustees, and the town trustees report out a state form called the MS9, and you have, you're required to report them in here. So, but they are under the, the holding of the trustees, and they're in here. So that's really, you know, a lot of the highlights of the financial statements, and again, while I've gone through it quick, you know, there is a lot of effort that the finance department goes, you know, into, and it is the town's numbers, and I'd say overall, the town was consistent year to year with improvement as far as that fund balance. So better spot than last year and remaining consistent. The second document we'd like to go through is the management letter. Now, while we've talked about the numbers, one of the key things in here that's really not stated is how we get to the numbers. And prior to really getting into anything, we look at the town's internal controls, meaning we, we do some critical testing on the vendor invoices, the payroll, journal entries, cash collections, because while the numbers are looking great, they don't mean anything if there isn't sound internal controls behind them. So typically, what comes out of that is potential management letter comments. You know, overall, our internal control testing went well, and as we're gonna see, some of the prior year comments were actually resolved. There really is, there is only a couple of new items that we, that we have in here. So I'm gonna go through them, and I'll go through them fairly quick. The first one, improving reconciliation of the holding accounts, it's been there. That's kind of a maintenance of a area. It will take some time, but really what that has to do is some smaller liabilities that have debit balances that need to be reviewed, and basically, how can they be cleared up? So it's a little bit of a research. Processing all the dispersals on the town manifest, that had been an issue, but during our testing, we considered that to be resolved. Improving the cash reconciliation process, you know, in the past, there had been some timing. There had been some very convoluted cash reconciliations, but during our current year testing, we found everything to be very good. The reconciliations were very timely, and they were a lot more straightforward than they had been in the past years, and we considered that issue to be resolved. Reconciling the tax receivables. Here, this is, this is basically a yes or a no. So when we look at the tax collector's MS61 report, which is the tax collector's balances at year-end, we compare them to the general ledger, and basically, what it comes down to is, do they agree? It's a yes or no answer. You know, overall, they were close, and going back and looking at it, you know, the property taxes, there was about a $16,000 difference, and really, the tax lanes was under five. So nothing major, but again, it kind of gets into play when we're looking at the internal controls. It's a yes or no answer, so that's why it's staying, remaining in there to do research and find a little bit more. But overall, it's not a bad item.
So there was a 16K difference?
Yes.
So the money's like missing?
No, it, it could be a factor of things being reported as potentially prepayment and not classified and/or a refund. So we didn't see any, there was no irregularities as far as money missing.
Okay.
It's a matter of how it's posting to the general ledger.
And that's a matter of, manner, matter of getting the verges to post to the right accounts, which would then identify the liens versus the collections properly?
Yeah. So there's, there was nothing, because that's, that's one of the big ones, is one of the tests that we do is to, to really come in, and we test a couple days as if we were the managers and overs, you know, looking at what the cash drawer said at the beginning of the day and the end of the day to make sure. We go through that part of the process, and then also making sure that the cash reconciles. So feel comfortable in saying that, but feel like, you know, a little bit more has to be done, and part of that is part of the merging process that comes through. And it's a yes or a no as far as, like I said, either they match or they don't. If they don't, it kind of gets put in here. Improving controls over library dispersments. Again, we go through because they're essentially outside of the town. We do do expenditure testing on them. We request invoices and other things. We had seen some issues in the past. We didn't see the issues this past year, and we consider that item resolved. There were some other issues that were really bullet points. Really, the testing came down to, in the past, the capital reserve funds, some of the transfers were a little bit dated. In this past year, there wasn't an issue. The due-to-do forms, there were some issues there as far as, you know, being balanced to the other funds and took some journal entries to get into balance. Some minor errors on the 230, MS232 and the MS434, which are budget reports, meaning that we're, we're testing to the town. Really, there were some classifications, and I know through this year's discussions between finance and DRA, some of that going forward, some of that is gonna be probably streamlined and better identified as far as talking with the...
The Department of Revenue.
Yeah, the Department of Revenue. So I would expect that that would be cleared up next year, and it's really what the Department of Revenue is wanting to see. So, you know, overall, there was, you know, a couple that were definitely cleaned up, and there's a couple of areas to still work on. For current year recommendations, you know, the documenting of oversight over journal entries, meaning that where there's limited amounts of people in the finance office, we like to see segregation of duties, and that also carries over to actually doing journal entries in the general ledger. It doesn't necessarily require the person as far as the oversight to have a, a high-end technical background because the journal entries, if they're brought and summarized in a manner on a monthly basis with the supporting documentation, there should be a description. So really, I would say the average person should be able to understand, why did you do, why was the journal entry necessary? And it's really for entries that are not day-to-day. It would be for potentially one-time reclassifications or things that you would kind of step back and say, well, why are you doing that? That's where the documented oversight, because again, there's a limited amount of people in, you know, as far as staff, so, you know, sometimes it has to be creative as to, you know, who is gonna see, be reviewing those journal entries. So it doesn't necessarily require a CPA or accountant, but it does require somebody looking at it and say, you know, can you explain? Can you explain to me? Does it make sense? And then the other was improving payroll documentation. We didn't have any, any issues as far as calculating the numbers. Really, what this came down to is when we were looking at the payroll, we, we take the steps that if we were brand-new to the finance office, and we wanna see all the supporting documentation all the way through to make sure that what is in the payroll module is properly supported and that it's signed off. And what we had is, while there was personnel action forms on file, they just didn't have a documented oversight, meaning that somebody had...
Double-signed it or witnessed it, is that the part?
It, it's double-signing, meaning that a board approval as far as, you know, how would we know that it was, that pay was officially approved? And it could be done in a couple different ways. Where you already have the personnel action form, you know, we'd recommend after the budget process at some point during the new year, go through, have the board sign off, you know...
Which we do. So we had a separate, we have a separate wage scale sheets that show the new wages and then the cover sheet, but I think what the auditor looked at were the summary sheets for each personnel file.
Right.
To make sure that the rate that was on that sheet that the employee was signed off on was witnessed by a staff employee, and it matched what the selectmen approved.
Right.
So those are...
So you maybe want an individual copy in each file?
We would prefer it that way, but, you know...
With a signature?
Yes.
Sounds like it's a pretty easy thing to do.
It's, it is, and it really comes down to, again, just good internal controls as far as the document was there.
Okay, when you guys will sign off on...
Yeah, easy enough to do. We'll just do a cover sheet for each file.
Yeah.
Not that many employees.
I was gonna say, yes. No, it, it, there isn't, and it just, like I said, we take the stance that when we're doing that testing is if we didn't know, you know, we don't know anything, so we wanna make sure that anything that's in there was already approved because if not, we wouldn't know, you know...
If they were break-paved costs.
You know, and sometimes, times do things because we've done it that way for a lot of years, and, you know, doing it a different way might be better for us than overall anyway.
Right. And it also comes into play if there's, you know, any type of outside eyes coming in.
Right.
That start looking at things and wanna see, well, you know, are people, you know, reviewing these things? And it's one thing to say that you do, and it's another thing to have it documented that, you know, just initial signature dated, and then it really alleviates any questions as to whether people are, you know, looking at things.
So perfect example is when you go into non-public for hiring actions, and you come out and make a motion, then there should be a follow-up form, cover letter, that the board signs off on that says that that employee's being hired at that rate in that file.
I know the new ones we've done, we've always stated the rate, so...
Right, but I don't think I've ever done that.
Right. So we could do, we could do all the files and update them all so they're accurate too, so...
That's it. Top to bottom, we'll be able, it'll take about 10 minutes, but we'll get them all.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it as a big issue, and I see, you know, a positive step forward in being able to get it done. And that was the last comment. There was really just the two one, new ones. It would also say that there was a lot of good things in here, meaning that there was a lot of items that were resolved from the prior year, so work is being done. And then the other thing that, you know, coming back full circle is, when this is presented, there's three criteria, meaning that some of these items can be considered a material weakness, a significant deficiency, or the lowest level, which we consider other comments, which means it doesn't have either of those notations. All of these were considered other comments, meaning that, you know, they didn't rise to, to the point where they needed to be documented that way. So they're all items that are, you know, considered to be reported but don't rise to that level that are really critical or something to extremely worry about, meaning that there are times where, you know, cash reconciliation's not here, but in other places might have a material weakness, which means that the board ought to take certain, you know, actions to make sure that that's, that's cleared up, but...
So when our reconciliations for our clerks and for our tax collectors, we should have a second signature on those as well, it looks like?
We, we would prefer that. I know it's been discussed in the past, and I know it's, it's gone back and forth. You know, when we look at it as far as best practices, that's one of the things that comes up in a lot of different places, and one of, you know, the different finance officers or associations like to, like to see those things. And it really comes down to when you're looking at communities, especially with small staff, you know, segregation of duties and the dual set of eyes looking at things, you know, but understanding, again, they're small staffs. I know it's been a topic of discussion here before, so, you know, but again, as far as best business practices, that's what, you know, people like to see.
Okay. So, are there any questions?
No, I think we'll move everything I have.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for inviting me in.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Patrick.
Have a good night.
So when Patrick brought up, that has been brought up in the past, those two positions are elected positions. They basically run their department almost entirely on their own. In order to be able to get a second set of eyes, they would have to rely on one of the other clerks or associates or myself to be here at the end of their shift so that I could sign off on their deposit and vice versa, or...
Now, how about a follow-up, like the follow-up morning, so you weren't here last...
Well, what I think still covers us generally is that the deposit slip will match, and this is the argument that your tax collector and town clerk have brought up, the deposit slip matches the report and the end-of-day report. And then your total, all your deposit slips for the... and this is the argument that your tax collector and town clerk have brought up. The deposit slip matches the report and the end-of-day report. And then your total, all your deposit slips for the course of the month with your reports get signed off by the treasurer, who then matches that to the bank, so. There is reconciliation to the bank, if you look at all the pieces, but they're just not done together in the same day. Do you see what I'm saying? And the real problem is that we have different shifts, different hours, different, and then.
But they also note that our monthly reconciliation only have the signal, signature as well.
That is, that is the town clerk and tax collector. Because they go, they only, they'll get their summary report and sign off on it. They'll go to the bank, make the deposit, and then the deposit slip's attached. So, the treasurer signs off on it at the end of the month, but not at the same time.
So, is there any way you can see to get a second set of eyes on it to sign off on?
If you want me to be here 60 hours a week, I can do that.
Why don't you just take a break and then come back? But the following day isn't good enough?
I think if you talk to your town clerk and tax collector, we've tried to resolve it to try to say, you're there both almost in the same shifts, maybe you can check each other's, sign off on each other, but they didn't feel comfortable saying, "I'm going to take $10, I'm going to use a small number, and go to the bank with it. I want you to verify that I'm taking $10." What's to say that between the time you sign your check here from one person to the other and goes to the bank, that it gets into the bank, so. One person didn't feel comfortable signing off on somebody else's reconciliation, not knowing where that final dollar amount, it's, I mean, it'd be a good question to talk to them.
If it is reconciled at a monthly basis by the treasurer.
It is, because the treasurer has to sign off on the deposit slips that match the ending summary total of the report for their income, and then that reconciles to the bank, so there is, but it's when you, when things get lost, if someone wants to really do something, then there's an opportunity to do it when you're only doing it on your own, on that daily basis.
So, maybe we'll get those department heads in and we'll talk it over. You know, maybe even before budget, just to talk it over, before we get busy with the budgets. See if there's any way to get a second set of eyes on it.
Okay. Moving on down the agenda.
John, you are on.
What is happening?
Dana, is you doing the presentation?
Come on up.
Hello.
Do you want to introduce yourself for this?
Sure.
I see you guys, you've blessed your support too.
I did, yes. So, I'm Dana Lavoy, a member of the Energy Committee, and I'm presenting here on behalf of the other Energy Committee members on the status of our investigations into a town solar PV solution for generating power and return on investment for the town.
Dana, can you give us the name of the other members here for our record?
I'll let them name it.
John Stevens. George Falk.
Lou Duvo.
David Elberfeld.
Do you get those?
Would you like to send a sign around sheet for you so you can hang it?
Yes. I can get it here.
Wait, we need to spell it correctly.
Okay. So, I have little handouts here. I want to keep this somewhat high-level and brief, but I want to get the point across as to where we are on our project investigation. Would either of you like a summary sheet here?
Sure.
There you go. Yep. Okay, so, we have essentially been investigating a project that would provide self-generated electrical power through a solar photovoltaic installation that will offset electrical utility costs in current town facilities. So, that's the overall objective. If you look here, I mentioned that the town buildings that we are seeking to supply the equivalent amount of energy for, it includes the town hall, library, the town offices, town garage, fire, police station, and also the transfer station. The total annual energy of all those buildings is approximately 72,000 kilowatt-hours, or 72 kilowatt-hours. The.
Do you know the annual cost on that? Have you guys looked at that? All of those combined?
We do have that. I don't have that number handy right now, but I'm.
That's all right.
We can get it later.
Okay, if we took that number and multiplied by about 18 cents a kilowatt-hour, we'd end up with the actual number. I'll get that for you, though. We, as far as the site of the array that we propose, we're looking to propose, we've looked at multiple town-owned sites for a while and came to an agreement that the Dunbarton Transfer Station was the preferred site for various reasons. We did speak to the Dunbarton Forest Committee who oversees the land where the transfer station operates. You were there. And we did get verbal unanimous agreement there on the purpose of the project and to allow the site to be considered for a proposal by the Energy Committee. We've also heard that there's existing trees that would potentially shade the solar array there. Apparently, there's a plan for some tree harvesting there, and it could include that if the solar project requires some trees to be removed. We don't know that at this point in time and, if anything, it seems to be, it would be relatively minor needs there anyway. The architecture and size of the system, we've reviewed several preliminary proposals and came up with a fixed ground-mount array that would generate approximately 56,000 to 59,000 watts of power. That is the optimal choice and the highest value per dollar. When I say highest value per dollar, there are other types of arrays. You could mount arrays on buildings. You can also have movable tracking arrays that would track the sun, but the cost of those other options and the value of those didn't exceed a ground-mount array. The architecture is comprised of approximately 160 panels and takes approximately a half an acre of land to site that size array. Financials, interesting. If we just look at that piece of it, over its 30-year expected life, one proposal in the project actually generates a projected surplus of 300, in excess of $340,000. There's many factors that can influence this number, but this number is actually conservative and there's far more upside to that number than there is downside. The upside financial potential, I listed a couple of things here. The projection plan that account for 3% annual increase in electric rates. If that was to change over the next 30 years, then your savings is actually bigger than that. There are, there is potential for grants. There's potential for more favorable net metering rules coming out of the New Hampshire State Legislature in the future that could all benefit this. You can't get negatively impacted by anything because we are locked in for a 40-year net metering rule as it stands right now, so whatever net metering rule is in place is guaranteed by law to be grandfathered for 40 years. So, it can't get worse, it can only get better. As far as financing for a project like this, there are two primary options for financing. One is a lease-to-own and the other one's an outright purchase. The, this type of a project actually is somewhat reverse of some other things that you would look at in that the lease-to-own proposal is more beneficial to the town than the outright purchase. And the reason for that is there's actually financial benefit due to being able to take advantage of federal tax credits and system tax depreciation. If you allow a for-profit entity to actually own the system for a period of so many years, they can pass that savings on to you. If the municipality was to buy a solar array outright on day one, you're not allowed to take the 30% federal tax credit or depreciate the system because the municipality doesn't have the ability to take those, yeah. To either depreciate or take the federal tax credit.
Homer is allowed to.
Yeah, that's correct. And also, a commercial entity is allowed to take the tax credit, and so.
Leasing would be the.
Leasing actually provides a better return on investment. If you lease it for a certain number of years and then you buy the system out at the end. And the proposals we have actually all revolve around a six-year lease period with then a purchase price at that point in time. I put some risks here. This is only to say that there obviously are risks, but they're relatively minor, as you're going to see. One risk would be, the sun doesn't shine anymore. We have bigger problems.
We're getting the negative this fall so far.
Yeah, we are. We're definitely cloudier right now. So, future technology that causes electric rates to plummet. If that was to ever happen, the perpetual motion machine, whatever energy might come out of Stephen Hawking's books that he just published, then that would certainly discredit the savings you'd get out of something like this. I think that's generally believed to probably not be too significant of a risk. And probably our, the realist, more realistic risk that I came up with would be uninsured losses to the facility.
If this lease, would the lease would be required to maintain insurance on it?
They are, yes. They actually would have to have that for six years. They also maintain it for the first six years at no cost to the town. I did put down here on the municipal projects, many towns already have solar installations or projects underway. It's a pretty active industry right now. Many towns, even just in the surrounding area, are doing the exact same thing that we're talking about right now. Some of them have already done it. And, and most all of them have, are showing the same type of return on investment that we're showing here.
What town is this pictured of in the back?
This one right here is, that's a good question. That one was Barrington. And I took that picture because that's almost the exact size of the system that we would have.
Is that two rows or is that three?
That one was two rows.
Two rows?
Yeah, and I know it's not easy to see, but.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, that was, that was a 56-kilowatt system, almost exactly like what we would have. Sorry, wanted to officially show that.
A 56 watt? That's not the yearly.
No, so, yeah, solar arrays will generate so much power in terms of their capacity to generate the power. The amount of energy is kilowatt-hours. Power is in watts.
So, our yearly usage is?
72 kilowatt-hours. 32,000 kilowatt-hours.
And the system would generate 56, I think.
Well, no, so 50, those two numbers are.
That's what I was trying to get at, because.
The capacity, what up?
One, kilowatt-hours is a time-based amount of, time-based period, and that's what you see in your electric bills, and so that's what, that's what that's measured in, so you get 1,000 watts per hour is a kilowatt-hour. The amount of watts the system has to generate is, is literally like 70% of what your kilowatt-hour number is. That's why 72 equates to about a 56 in terms of the size.
So, it looks like we've got a system that will at least cover our usage.
Yeah, this actually covers 100% of, the 56,000-watt array covers 72,000 kilowatt-hours in a year.
Now, when we were looking at the $340,000 based over that 30 years,
Yep.
that's stating that basically we wouldn't use all of the power that it was producing, correct?
The $340,000 surplus comes from the period of time after you've paid off the loan to buy the system.
Which you're, which you're thinking between the lease and the purchase would be how many years?
So, it turns out that the, the lease situation shows you having a cash-flow-neutral position for the town for six years. So, they make the lease agreement slightly lower than what you're already paying for your electric bills and you pay a lease company that over the six-year period. It's slightly lower, like if electric rates went up, that's a fixed price, so you have a fixed lease amount. It doesn't go up. Other towns have actually done a situation where they actually rises with.
They added 3%.
Yes, inflation rate or something, or, you know, based on the CPI or something. This is not, this is a fixed price over the six-year period. So, you'd have a cash-neutral or better situation over that first six years. You would then have a loan. They, they sell you the system at about 40% of the original cost, 30 to 40%, somewhere in there. And it's actually more like 30%. And then you, whatever that loan takes to pay off, it's about five years to pay off. So, you have an about 11-year period of time where you're cash-neutral or slightly positive. And then from year 12 to 30 is where you generate the $340,000. Because you now, your utility bills are, are down to just your customer charges and your base, base costs. You don't have any more loans to pay for the equipment anymore and it's just sitting there generating power for, for 19 years.
And 11, at 11 years, how much less power is it generating than it did when it was brand-new?
0.4% per year, but the panels are guaranteed to produce over their 30-year lifespan 83% of their rated power. So, out of the 56,000 watts, take 83% multiplied by that, they're guaranteed even over at the 30th year to still produce 83% of that.
A system this size, total cost, say we want to buy it outright or do a warrant article for a buyout, what would that be?
$160,000.
It's year six?
No.
No, it's year one.
Year one.
Year one, a full buyout.
So, just to give you a perspective, the savings that the company gets by doing the federal tax credit and depreciation, if you have a cash-neutral position for that first six years in the lease, like I was telling you, at year six on the 73rd month, the buyout price is 50,000 on a $160,000 system.
So, the thing is, they're basically sharing the cash credits with us?
Yes.
Okay. I'm concerned about the location. There's a burn pit right there. Tell me about the soot from the burn pit, you know, the fire, the panels.
They're going to just blow them off after.
Yep, so, there are plans to stop the burning, I guess, in the burn pit. And I don't, I don't have anything, any more specifics on that.
But he didn't get back to us on that. He is planning to make up because he has to have somebody there while they're burning. Right now, they got a box and they put it in, and that heat gets pretty hot. And he has concern, plus he has, you have two complaints in your.
Yeah, from a butters.
Butters, and we now have a way to get a, he was talking to a company coming in, bringing in dumpsters for the brush and things like that. And they would be taking it away to make it an energy-efficient product, grinding it up, making, you know.
You're going to take the company and conquer the grind and all that stuff.
So, it.
That would eliminate the problem then.
It, it has until it gets to you to make that decision. And he supposedly has written it, he has written it up because he's, he likes the idea because he doesn't have to keep people working over, stay with the fires. And he has, it's also clean energy. He's not burning. It's going to go back to the recycling. So, it's part of your whole program.
These are some pictures that we have here showing where that burn pit is here. This is, this is showing, you know, some area back here that we could site the panels. Obviously, that is, that would be close if you have panels right nearby. There is a possibility of putting them further back if that actually, if that stayed there, yeah.
So, there's flexibility.
But it might, yeah, this might add more land costs, excavation costs and things if you had to move it back towards those trees because this drops off quite a bit right, right in this area.
I'm not, I'm not real sure why we just brushed to the town dump anyway. I've never brushed there myself. You didn't burn it at your own house. I don't know why we take it, but. Maybe it's something we've always offered. I've never really looked at it, but.
Yeah.
So, next steps.
So questions for you would be, I got some questions, you can tell us if you have additional questions.
Well, the thing is, generally, I'm very much in favor of this proposal. I just don't wanna, you know, if it was a warrant article, we had to bring something in front of the voters, so be it. But the thing is, I just don't wanna have a fiasco like what they did several years ago with this building, when they tried to do solar panels on this one, and then it was, it was disaster in the sense that they couldn't talk about all the risk factors, the roof, for example. And that was a major issue, I just don't wanna go down that path and get egg on our face again. And embarrass the whole group of people trying to do a good thing.
The difference so this time, because I was in the audience then, was you didn't have a lease proposal, you had a purchase proposal to put it on there. Whereas in, I think I talked to John about this, having that option even to offer people, you know, makes it more palatable, because a lot, you're gonna get that question from somebody anyways. Even if you went with purchase, someone's gonna say, why shouldn't we lease? So, you know, looking at your presentation is pretty thorough, I think. And, you know, I know that, and I talked to Lou about the towns that have it, that have been successful, that are saving money, you're making money with it, so.
Do we have to buy it at year six?
Well, that's penis though, fifty thousand.
No, this is my curiosity. Let's say new technology comes out in five years, and then we realize what we're buying is old technology, it's something even better.
Yep, so there's two, two things there. One, the company that would be leasing it to you would be real, very happy to just continue taking the lease payments indefinitely. Because. Yeah, because they would actually kind of, then they'd really benefit by the whole thing, they wouldn't be passing on anything to us. But it would, I mean, that's not a terrible scenario, it's just you have a fixed electricity cost forever, like that. There's actually a certain price here, you just pay it forever. But it would be to our advantage to actually buy it out at that point in time. There, my guess is if you said, hey, there is technology available at six years, that, hey, we don't want this thing here anymore, there's likely a removal cost in the contract. I haven't explored exactly what that is, but they would, you know, the escape clause there would be, you'd have to pay for them to get it out of there.
Okay.
Yep.
But, I don't know, I, I think the consensus on the board, I'm gonna, I think we're all pretty positive about this.
Yep.
And it's a, you know, when you, there's a zero-cost option, does it have to go as far as a warrant? There's no option, there's no purge on it.
So in the, in the, in what looks like the most favorable option, which is the lease-to, lease-to-buy option.
Right.
We would need to account for a fifty thousand dollar buyout in, at the seventy-third month. And so my suspicion is, we would have to warrant article that now, at least maybe to set aside money, or?
To set we do for a capital improvement.
Right.
And that should be an energy capital improvement for down the road.
Right. Now, the difference of something like that in terms of selling it to the voters, this is kind of interesting. If you put this fifty thousand dollars away, the calculations show that that fifty thousand dollars will earn twenty-one point eight-five percent on your money at year seven through, through twenty-five. How, how many capital projects could you ever say that putting that money aside actually will return money to you?
That's a good way of presenting it to the public.
Yep.
And it's cheaper than a police car.
And, right. And it's a capital investment that actually, actually makes money.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, you can also do that incrementally over the six years, is put away.
That's what I'm saying, do it like.
Two thousand dollars a year.
Well, ten thousand.
Ten thousand a year in five years, we'd have them on.
Six years, eight thousand.
Exactly.
Right, right.
So I'm right with you.
That's what we're thinking in the warrant article, if you word it that way, it's very, very low impact to the voters over the next five or six years.
I was gonna say the same thing.
That becomes.
It has very little impact.
It looks like a no, it becomes a no-brainer.
It's less than milfoil.
And you, you might actually almost be funding a portion of that through the fact that there are, there's upside to the money that you're, you have a fixed amount that you're paying, which is lower than the electric rates even during the lease period.
Right, so it's almost paying for itself.
It might almost be paying for itself by putting that money away, because you're gonna find that you're gonna have.
Buying electricity at a lower rate to start with compared to what we could get from public service.
Can I just ask a question, I work in the finance department.
Sure.
What, what are you talking about putting money away, did they, do we pay them ten thousand a year?
No.
No, no, we go into our trust fund.
Yes.
And that's what our trust fund's paying us?
No, I'm telling you that the fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah?
As soon as you bought the array, so now you're buying this six-year, it's sitting there.
You send the fifty thousand dollars, it's gonna give you three hundred and forty dollars.
It's gonna give you, and, and that's after you paid off the fifty even.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's.
So it was like three ninety.
So you're just calculating how much you're gonna earn on your money after you spend.
Oh, well, that is, yeah, that's a good way to explain it then.
Right. Yeah, it's, it earns twenty-one percent on your money.
Which. Yeah, I think, I think with the lease option, I think it is, I really didn't wanna put the whole thing on a warrant article in front of the voters after we had the school last year, so this gives a good option to start this project. The only thing I'd like to ask is that, do you guys look for any hidden costs? You know, increased transformers, increased pole heights, underground?
Total, total, total cost, I agree with that.
Fence and clearance, any of that, if you look at, anything that the lease company's not gonna, or buy.
And if we do, if we do have a burn pit, what kind of cleaning is we gonna need at least? Do we have to clean it monthly if there's soot?
Right.
Go out for bid, but, because that hasn't been settled yet.
Right.
So we have a few what-ifs.
You know, I would think even if, if that burned pit kept going, you know, a blower the next morning, you know, walking around those things, in five minutes, you'd have them all cleaned right off again, it's just, it's just ash particles, it's nothing heavy.
Right, right.
Or rain.
Yeah, that cleans the house.
Yep.
You, uh, do you require as far as town business for us to publicly notice this for RFP?
Yes, absolutely, over ten, yeah.
No, but it's a lease though.
Uh.
But there is a fifty thousand dollar purchase.
Yeah.
At the end.
At the end.
Okay, that's.
So you're, you're basically setting up a capital reserve fund.
Correct.
At town meeting, ten thousand a year.
Eight thousand a year.
Eight thousand a year, so there's, no, for that, they're just gonna request.
For eight thousand a year, wouldn't they? Sorry, for eight thousand a year, you wouldn't need to publicly RFP it?
What you're gonna do is you're gonna put it out for RFP to try to get best product for the money, which would require an RFP, correct? But you're just doing the financing part, so that, they have nothing to do with.
You wanna get an RFP from whatever proposal that you wanna include into a warrant article, correct?
No, they're not gonna do this on a warrant, they're gonna do a lease, they wanna do it as a lease.
Oh, they're not doing it on the warrant?
Yeah, but even though they're doing a lease, they're gonna do it as a warrant article, Lane.
No, the warrant, the warrant article won't even be to set the trust fund to pay for it down the road.
Yeah, just to set up.
Yeah, which is a fifty thousand dollar.
Correct, but that's just a, that doesn't need an RFP, you're just basically setting up a capital reserve fund under RSA to fund the future purchase of this solar, that this board is deciding is the best avenue for us to, in the long-term, return money to the voters, basically.
I guess.
Yeah, we do it with the fire department, the DPW, so you don't, I don't see where you'd need that, you know, RFP.
You don't, you don't.
That's what I'm saying, I agree with you.
Yeah, that's just a small, a small.
So it's a small one, one.
Yeah.
Why is that there needed to be a warrant article to explain this all to the voters?
Technically too, though, if you really wanted to, and that one year that you have to pay this out, you can take it out of your building maintenance. Because now you're at a fifty thousand dollar price rather than.
Right, but I, I think if we don't have a warrant article explaining this whole thing to the voters in, in showing the portion that's under the lease, and then the portion for purchasing, and then we only need to purchase that fifty thousand dollars in that warrant article with a dollar amount to that fifty thousand dollar.
You know, I'm rethinking this second, I'm rethinking it.
That's how I think we ought to go to the voters with that, so we show, you know, the total cost under the warrant article, but six years with as a lease, costs that much for the lease, which is under our current power rate. And so it wouldn't be an additional cost to voters, and then show the fifty thousand dollars in that warrant article.
I don't think the DRA would.
The only thing is, and I'm rethinking this now, because we spent eighty-some-odd thousand to paint a building over there, we took it out of maintenance.
Correct.
Okay, and so I don't, you know, I know it sounds good to put it in a warrant article, but we're trying to save the town money. We had John Stevens do different projects for the cost of lighting.
We were maintaining an existing structure, this is a new structure.
But the thing is, I, I would say the only reason it's gotta go in front of a warrant, just to establish a new fund, a trust fund.
If that's the.
If we go with a lease, that's the only thing we're doing, and we could explain it all. The snaps, the abbreviated version, just to the voters, why are we establishing this fund of eight thousand dollars a year? And we're gonna transfer eight thousand dollars every year into it, down the age.
I think, I think we should use the municipal association and DRA
Yeah.
to try and get a determination of what other towns have done, how we should approach it at town meeting. Instead of kind of guessing and going back and forth on, you know, I think there may be a couple different ways we can do this. But I think that explaining it the way you guys have come here tonight might be the best format to do it in front of the voters.
Is it, and just to correct me if I'm wrong, I know Lou and Dave know a little bit, is it Webster and is it Pembroke, they've gone through this already?
I said Pembroke, but it's actually Allenstown that we went to, it was three of us, the three, and we, that, we went a year ago. Oh, about a year ago, is that right? And they had just put up their first system in Webster, of which now they have just put a second system in. When we went to Allenstown, we saw the fire department, and they rented the roof company. hands-off, they rented the space and they put on, that was another system. Well, it worked out so good that now they have another system, and there was enough in there that, the way they budgeted and everything, they needed street lighting, they went to the new LED streetlights, they had everything covered. School, they had, the entire town is now covered. And that was in two and a half years that they've done this.
I could reach out to the administrators and just.
That's what I was gonna say is.
We have names of people that you could contact.
Webster did a outright purchase, I do know that, I've been in touch with the Webster folks. They were able to get their system at cost because the company was interested in getting the business at the time. And they purchased their system for two dollars and fifteen cents a watt, just to give you some perspective. Current good rates on these systems is about two eighty-five, they got it for two fifteen. With the finance incentives and, and leveraging those tax credits I was just telling you about, our system would cost us a dollar fifty a watt. So, what I'm saying is that their, their proposals, their warrant articles would have included buying it outright.
And, and I guess.
And ours would be two eighty-five a watt to buy it outright, or one fifty a watt to do the lease purchase. And so we do have to come up with, if you talk to Webster, our warrant article will sound different than theirs because of that.
Yeah.
I just wondered what the other towns that have town meetings, if they had it on a warrant article, or if they used a different process, which, and which, wouldn't make sense to have an idea.
How do they get it?
Yeah, I need an idea of what we.
So we can make it a call them, by how they're doing after they've had it for a couple of years. How they like their systems, and, and then, you know, give us some feedback on it. And then, but I would think with the, between the DRA and the municipal association, we'd get an accurate format on how we should approach the voters on it.
Yeah. I got a couple towns that I know, towns that have done it, would be places like Durham, Webster, Brentwood. I know right now Henneker's in the process of it, they're, they wanna bring it to voters the same time we would.
Did you say Henneker?
Henneker's in process right now, yeah.
I don't see, I don't see in front of the voters where it would be anything derogatory, because the benefits that you're explaining there, I think it would be an easy sell-in for the voters themselves.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
But I don't, from experience of how the, the DRA wants to, if we're doing a lease, it's just like when the police department was leasing their vehicles.
Well, that's why I want you to get that background and come back to us and show us.
You don't, you don't need to show the whole purchase amount on a warrant, because you're only needing five thousand this year.
It's just establishing a fund initially.
Establishing a fund, and then the presentation is explained to say, this is why we're doing it.
So if they come back to us and say that's the way we should do it, then that's how we'll have them do it.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I was suggesting originally.
So I think the DRA, I'll do a really quick check.
Okay.
And then.
Okay, and then the thing is, we just wanna do a little coordination with the transfer station manager, see what the actual plans are for the burn pit, because that's gonna be potentially in fact-site location, correct?
I know he was at that town forest meeting, because he's on that committee that I was at with you, and.
Yeah.
But he, you know, he knew that he'd already had a complaint or two this year.
Right.
And had talked about maybe, you know, changing how we do that down there, so.
John, you have a comment?
Just, just that, with that, the, the cost of operating, operating the burn pit at present versus the, the cost of this company coming in and taking it all out, are this.
That's what we're gonna have to just, we have to just look at that.
That, that's, that's why I was, was, that's, those are the components of the question. I, I of course don't have that answer, but.
And he hasn't come to us yet with any.
Concrete proposal, he, he did, he did mention it to us in passing, like things, nothing concrete was presented.
And he is still at a town at this moment, I think.
Currently, we got some comments there.
Well, at one of the past meetings, he stated that he was gonna have to look into changing some of those pre-cast blocks because they were burning out. So that might be part of the issue that he has, you know.
And I was always saying, one of the building walls on some of the other sides, we have concrete blocks already in place. So we have, we have a use for some of those concrete blocks already. Okay, great presentation.
Thank you very much.
I'm excited, I think this is a, you guys, the committee, I just wanna say thank you for doing a great job.
So just to reiterate, he asked the question about the bid. You are gonna seek out panel number, or bid package?
That is, you're gonna create specifications.
And you're gonna put it out to different.
Yes.
Yeah, so we definitely need to do that, put that in the paper.
How many, how many bids do we need?
No, it says how many, who bids on it, if we get one, it's good to try and have three, but.
It's sealed, it should be sealed bids, these are sealed bids, over ten thousand, we put it in, and seal it.
Okay, you say put it in the paper.
I will, through me.
Can you help that?
Absolutely, yeah.
In fact, have the bids come into Lane's office, and then we'll.
Yeah, they have to come here to the office, we stamp it in the.
But you gotta be very specific on your criteria and specifications, as far as what you want in the lease, and what, you know, you, if it's not there, it's, we, we have to go back to them and ask questions.
And we've had problems before where you want everybody bidding apples to apples, right?
Right.
So by setting your, your bid criteria, yeah.
Even, even to the point of what type panel you want, even where it's made, what kind of wattage you want per panel, you get some.
Well, so, so we've already did a bunch of this.
Some of it's already happened.
Three vendors, and we've gotten two responses, one was non-responsive, and it was more of a performance-based bid, that we need this much energy, you come up with a plan.
Okay.
And, you know, tell, tell us your best, give us your best shot, and then we decide on that. That's, that's what we've gotten so far, we have preliminaries from two.
Yes.
And a third was non-responsive, so.
So George, now that you know their layout and how you may wanna handle it as a group now, then you can write up how you wanna see it come back to you for correct pricing, send it out to all three, and if you only get two back, a lot of times we, we don't, it's so busy right now, a lot of times we don't get three back either.
Sometimes you get one.
So, you know.
Well, I think we'll probably get two back at least, but are, are, are we posting this as a public offering, or we have it as selected vendors?
No, it can be a public offering.
Public, yeah.
And then, so if you get some, you know, you always have to write as part of that when you write that up.
Right.
You don't have to choose the lowest price, you know, it's the.
Yeah, it could be like someone in, in business for three months versus someone's been doing it for two years, that's maybe an issue. Someone who's got experience in putting these up versus, I've done two installations versus I've done thirty installations. Those factors, we're gonna need references, of course.
At value, lowest risk.
So you'll wanna, the bids to come into the office, open them up at a selectmen's meeting, the selectmen may say, if you've got five bids, we're turning them over to you, you come back, give us a report, and what your recommendations are.
What's the timeframe that we need to get this all done, so that we have enough time to get it on the warrant?
No warrant needed, if we're leasing, we're doing the lease, correct?
So it's just.
So we don't even need a warrant though for the eight thousand dollar?
No, we'll.
No, they'll work on the warrant.
Oh.
But if they, th- that, that.
Right.
Let's wait here, that, for the confirmation.
Yeah, but the thing is, that's, on paper, writing in pencil, we'll work on the warrant, but things, we're gonna get confirmation from outside sources.
But I will check with the DRA for sure, so.
Okay.
That way they will know for sure how we should be going about it, so we're not doing anything that's
Yeah.
going about it the wrong way, and people come down with that.
Do you have, I'm assuming that there must be a town template for bid?
Bid, I do, yeah, I do, yeah, I'll send it to you.
All right, so. We can get that together, Dan and I can work on.
Yeah.
The thing is, you could, you could. The thing is, you could, you could have something out, maybe, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be aggressive, one to two weeks. And you can get it, get it specific, and it won't take long to come up with specifications. And we can put it right out on, put a forbid for maybe three weeks.
You know, a lot of times if you send some out, the companies might call you back and say, hey, you really should list this on there because, you know, you, you forgot this part of it, and, and then you just send out a correction to that.
Right.
You know, and dock and, and have that fixed too.
So do you have made in America requirements for the town?
It's up to you guys whether you'd want that, I mean, we wanted Vermont slate, so we stated Vermont slate for the library on our, our page.
This is not a question.
But I decided, like, the town policy is, because if, for example, the Chinese solar panels are a lot cheaper or, and, and more cost effective.
I'm just gonna ask that question, yeah.
Yeah, but who knows with the tariffs now, so.
You know, when you guys get your quotes back, those are some of the things as a board you'll have to discuss because like,
Well, we put it on the R P.
On the library, we didn't take the lowest bid, we were looking at that pay because we had warranties and other things and we felt that that library deserved.
The only, the only way, when it comes down to recommendations you have, I have two equal, equal companies. And we're gonna be looking for you as subject matter experts, the company with the recommendations to us.
Right. So there could, one of the factors could be financing options, right? Different companies have that difference.
And maybe they can sweeten it for us.
Sure.
And I think it's a, there's a term we call it, at least a term we learned, what was the term we learned?
Wiggle room.
Wiggle room, what's the wiggle room in the, in the financing? I think it's, in a, two competing companies, one may give us just a little bit, it may sweeten enough, especially when you're talking apples to apples.
Okay.
That's not a, I don't think that's a real contracted term, would you? Okay, great, all right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
What, what, like, did it, did I hear, you need to hear back from us to post that within a couple of weeks?
You can, Lean will give you a copy of the template, start drafting it, and then we'll review it and we can send it out.
Yeah. I'll get a, a question off to the DRA and the NHMA right off, so that you have that answer.
Yeah, okay.
My only concern is if you're talking about leasing with financing, how do you carry a lease from, that we're committed to in your operating budget that you're only allowed to work with within one year?
Be care of warrant article.
That would be the thing.
That's why I just wanted you to go and get the advice and then come back to us and then we'll make.
You guys are the selectmen, you can do anything you want.
That's what I heard before. That's why I'm here, George.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I think you're getting a green light from us, correct?
Yes.
That's the message we wanna say.
Thanks for all the research, that helps us a lot.
Thanks, John.
The thing is, synopsis works. All right, continue on.
Each selectman gets a little lump in the house.
Well, that won't happen, but one of the, one of the selling points would be that the town would save money once it's installed.
From day one?
Right, because they're dropping the rates down, so you're gonna save.
That's why I don't. I take warrant articles, I know right, I just gotta go right through them.
But it'd be kinda nice to see what the other towns do that have town meetings. Because, you know, it's a possibility.
Right, if you're leasing and you don't have to put up any money, then there is no warrant. But if you wanna set up that cap reserve, that cap reserve.
The second half, that cap reserve, so. And, and you are doing money out from the town through that lease, but it's money we're already spending now, so.
And you'll be saving on your electric bill.
Every month.
Every year, for those six years of leasing.
It would be, I don't think it would be eight thousand dollars, I think it's. I said we spend more on police, I, I mean, literally, you save more on a car than we do, than we do on a, this.
Or literally, you can take your surplus and say, I wanna put, take ten thousand this year surplus and apply it to that warrant. I mean, they change the method sometimes to let the voters decide on that, but those are always options.
So it'd be no cost to the voters?
I just think, I just think it's gonna be, I think it's an easy sell, so I wanna make them aware that it's all done.
Yeah.
The only thing is, it depends on the turnout. Because you get some people in their head, they don't want this.
But I don't think for something with such a low cost.
Yeah, but it depends, again, depends on the turnout, you know?
Okay, I need to, we're gonna move on to Reese lacrosse Dunbar. We have an amount, do you have a check for an amount of seventy dollars?
Yeah, I can stand it, I can, I can go over there.
Dave, anyway, do you read that?
Okay, I wanna make a motion per, you wanna do a ball?
Nope, I was just laughing because I didn't see that your type was any different than mine.
I had to scramble for my glasses. I wanna make a motion per RSA thirty-one, colon ninety-five dash B three, paragraph B, to accept a donation from fundraising for Reese lacrosse Dunbar in the amount of seventy dollars.
I was thinking your motion.
Any discussion on that? Here or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'd like to thank them again for collecting that money.
Absolutely.
All right, we're gonna go on to town business. First of all, I'd just, the town clerk's not here, so I'm gonna speak on behalf of the town clerk. I wanna surface one issue.
That too.
Okay, yes. Thing is, the absentee ballots came up, and the thing is, a voter came into the office and identified an error in the ballot. Forty-four ballots were sent out. So she, what the town clerk did is contact the state, the state concurred with the, with the error. They reprinted the ballots and returned the ballots to us. Those forty-four ballots that were sent out, we had to resend them and they have to revote again. You can see the mistake that was made here, and so it says state senator, it should be blank, should not have that word in there. If you wanna take a look at that. So what Linda did, for those forty-four people, she, this afternoon, put a couple of letters together. She explained what the problem was, was an, as an error made by the secretary of state as they printed the ballots. And she is already, she's, it's going out tomorrow morning's mail, new ballots for those forty-four people. And this is a copy of the letter she sent with it, well as well written, if you wanna see it. And this is just an FYI, so if there's any information, any discussion, anyone that voters hit you up on this, you're aware of it. She also gave us, by email in the studio in your boxes, a copy of the updated voting regulations, the changes that were made.
Yours is still in your basket, they took theirs.
I did thank her for it off by email already.
Okay, great. So that's, then, if you recall the last meeting, we were talking about, new subject. We're talking about checks returned for insufficient funds, bounce checks. She has talked to the police department, the police department has given her the appropriate form. It's work in progress, and she's working, she's gonna continue to work with the police department and then come to us with a, for us to basically approve if we're gonna pursue someone with legal matters. So she has, she has contacted, they have, they've dropped off a form for her to stop the process, so it's a work in progress.
Okay, back to this?
Yes.
That, those forty-four?
Yes.
That was to get permission to use stamps to self-address this envelope?
Right.
So that they can return the expense at our cost rather than their cost, so they've already done, gone through it once. She wants to make sure that she's okay to use self-addressed envelopes?
I'm in consensus that you have.
Consensus, sure.
Okay.
All right, and the other thing was.
Going to that one though is, you know, it's gone long enough that it's been two years, and you don't want it to go three years.
I'm expecting, I'm hoping something that takes a week or two to come along, so.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in consensus, wouldn't say come up with some way to go about it that we, as a board, follow up on it.
So for the record, we just wanna have her maybe return to the board next week, I think another week, we, there's enough. She has the form, next week we can make a, another determination.
And that's for the insufficient?
Insufficient funds. Regarding the, she's still working on the dog, a letter, she's gonna, she's still drafting the dog letter, and that's work in progress, she's gonna report that. The, this voting issue is surfaced as a priority today, so she's, was sending up forty-four letters this afternoon, working on that, so that was a high priority. I moved on to the inbox now. We got letters, we all signed them, they're Primex, some of the insurance rates, most of them have gone down. These are insurance rates for the workroom's compensation, property liability, unemployment compensation. Pretty much, they went down just a tiny little bit. We also got notification, moving on, health trust went, went up about ten percent across the board on healthcare plans. This lady's coming in to talk to us on November first, she's on the agenda. She'll have packets next week, which we can study and come prepared for the meeting.
I just wanna make note that, for the people watching this, they went down six percent last year, so even by increasing ten percent, it's not, not as bad as it sounds.
It's still, I agree, so that can go. This is an information only, just, Grapevine Road is completed and there is nine thousand two hundred and eight dollars left on the budget.
The warrant?
Warrant monies, that's gonna lapse into the general fund. The road agent's been informed of that. School board gave us a courtesy calendar of their meetings. And I'll leave that in the box for reference.
Lean, can I get a copy of that?
Okay, Bob, have you been, you've been pretty much a liaison with the transfer station?
Well, between the individual, say, why?
Okay, there's a dinner coming up for NRRA, and the thing is, I know Roger Rice is gonna go, he's a, he's a treasurer.
Treasurer?
And I know the, our transfer man, station manager goes, but I thought you might wanna be, if you wanted to join us, join that for lunch with them, you can, if you're interested in it.
No, I'm gonna pass on that, that's something they should be involved with.
Okay. Dave, do you have any interest, I just, okay. I, I think we'll be well represented with those two individuals going. Just do wanna maybe remind Woody on return that he's gonna make sure he gets a reservation in there, I think there's a deadline. In fact, yeah, I think that'll be fine. Okay, we do have a non-public, a non-public tonight, we're gonna talk about a few issues.
Any other public?
I'm just looking right now. Yeah, I don't have anything, I'm gonna open up for public comment now.
Nope, other than the fact that I liked their idea with this electric, the, the solar panels.
I just, I just don't want it to fall on, on the, on the face, on the, with the fiasco that happened with this building.
Yeah, but I think we're talking a totally different animal here.
I do too.
You would have had to have a whole little roof, then when the roof needs changing, you know, you got these panels on there, nobody ever knows, and that's what.
And some, some people were against having it in the common, too.
Yeah, right, right, but I mean, there's so many unknowns that, you know, whereas it's out there, it's nobody's way, no visibility.
The ability is having it on this building too, I mean, it's, I don't think it's the place for it, but out there, perfect.
Yep, yep, I agree, yeah. Good spot for it.
It's almost called, I call it a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a good spot for it.
Well, not just that, the poles are designed, I think, more for it out there as well.
But I mean, it is a good spot for it, it's out of the way, you know, and it's gonna, what else are you gonna use that piece of property for? So it's actually a really good use of the property and it's a really good thing for the town, right?
The committee's done a lot of research, they've gone to the towns that had it. They haven't found any towns that weren't successful. And they, they rounded up the numbers that we use for energy, so that they could get the right size, you know, panels in there to cover the cost, and for the town to make something on it at the same time, because after our cost drops, you know, you've got the, what do they call that?
Net metering.
Net metering, that we can make money on, so after six years, it becomes, that's why you were showing that number. It becomes a, you know, profit thing for the town at the same time, so.
The other thing.
They put in a lot of work to do that, you know?
The other thing also was the concern about if something better comes later on, and that's always gonna happen.
Agreed.
So, you know, it's kinda like my son was worried about getting a home loan years ago, and it was like down to three percent, and he said, what should I do? I was like, what are you waiting for, you know? You gotta choose, sooner or later you gotta pick it and get, go forward.
It's like buying a computer too.
Or a car, or a car, the day you bring your car home, next week they have something new in it, you know? So, you gotta, you gotta jump on it sometimes.
Thank you, Leo.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that too, Leo, Dean, you know, three hundred and forty thousand dollars is a nice number to look at. But most likely, over those years, our energy cost as a town will increase too, so we might not see the revenue, you know, the revenues as in dollar amounts, but we'll see them in savings.
Yeah, exactly, of course, yeah.
So, it's a different way to calculate it, but we should see.
And, and for the next several years, the prices are not coming down on electricity. Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the board, thank you, Leo. Dave, I'll let you go first.
I did, I did go up and call after Lean spoke.
Reminded you of Brian Norman.
Yes.
In reference to the turnaround at the end of Purgatory Pond Road. He didn't have a particular issue with people using the turnaround, other than it might block a town vehicle or any other type of vehicle from turning there. And his suggestion, because the road is so wide, is now that everybody can park along the road, he said people have actually parked in his driveway and yard in the past, and he hadn't had a big issue with it, so. I was kind of in agreement with him that, you know, the turnaround shouldn't get blocked with people lining and parking up, because now if you go down that road, it is a substantially wide road, and you can park on both sides, they're not blocking the road, so. It was kind of a non-issue, and after discussing it with him, I was in agreement with him that, you know, there's plenty of closed parking now.
Yeah, it is.
The language you recommended, has it already been incorporated into the draft?
Well, actually, he wrote up, he handwrote that paragraph.
Okay.
And it's in the, the final version in red and then printed as a final version to sign. But the way he worded it was to use it as a turnaround for the public and all the above. And basically, I'm sure they'll consider a sign saying, use for turnaround only, so that people don't use it to park. And then they can park along the side of the road.
And again, if people do use it to park, like any turnaround, we can just, you know, we can deal with it at that point too.
If it becomes problematic.
I will tell you, the use on that pond is fairly low, as Leo did, so I don't think it to be a, kind of a non-issue.
Yeah.
Okay, well, anything else, Dave?
Nope, the only other thing is, I did make him aware that, you know, we did talk with the chief of police about not changing the ordinance but allowing hornpouch and nighttime fishing at the pond. So I made him aware of that, just so he didn't see people out there, being allowed to be out there when they've had this ordinance imposed, just out of courtesy, and, and he was okay with that.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Wow.
Not much, other than they did take a look at the public works buildings, they came out really well.
They really did.
They did a really good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I concur, I did also, I'm making this out, it's good.
I'll stop and check it out.
Jeff did contact me, he said he was very pleased with the way it looked, he said it's exactly what it needed.
Has anything started at the safety complex or the?
Oh, yes.
They're almost done, actually, they'll be going down tomorrow and then finishing up early part of next week.
Oh, that's a transfer.
Oh, no, sorry, the transition.
Now, did the safety complex? Do you guys wanna bring up the safety complex?
I'm, I'm with them, we're doing now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just on the safety complex. Yeah, I did vary, but I think it's, I was, I was.
Can I read? I'll speak on it.
Go ahead.
So, safety complex painting was awarded to Tunnel Paint, uh, two weeks ago. And when I contacted him to let him know that he had been awarded the, the painting job, Don stopped in to let me know that because he had provided us that bid a couple of weeks prior, that it, um, there was a possibility that he wouldn't be able to get the job done until spring, depending on the weather. So I held off on letting the board know because it was still three weeks ago. Uh, he has since touched base with me again this week, and he wanted to let me know that because the weather hasn't been cooperating, the likelihood of him getting the painting done this year correctly with the right weather is not looking like it's going to happen this year, so wanted to let the board know that he would like to do the job, he will hold the price, and will do the entire job from start to finish in the spring of two thousand, two thousand nineteen. And if the board's okay with that, then I can encumber those funds.
You know, with the weather being as wet as it has been, I'm in agreement with them only because I'd say four out of seven days on these last three or four weeks have been raining.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even if he was to do that job, the wood wouldn't really dry out enough to paint.
Too cold at night anyways.
And it's too cold, so I'm in agreement, if we can put the funds, encumber the funds.
We can encumber it. Yeah, okay, so I'll let him know, that means I'm set.
You guys are all into that?
Yeah, according to the, the weather, we had twenty-two cloudy days in October. And that's twenty, twenty-two since September into October, twenty-two cloudy days.
It's not gonna help our solar farm.
Yeah, so do our motion?
No, no, I just wanna let you know that I will encumber those and I'll, I'll notify him.
Yes, let him know we're in agreement with that.
Okay.
Well, it's to me now, if Bobby have anything else.
No, I don't have, other than, did they start on the siding at all, you know? I mean, because I'm better on, so.
Oh, he did reach out to me, um, JW, yeah. He said that he's looking at the first week of December to do that work. And I said I would have a check available, but he would confirm the date and the start time with me for sure, when he does do that.
So he knows he has the job, they reached out to you, so.
Yep, yep.
That's all done, great.
Okay, we got a letter from the, this is to me now, from the Central Regional Planning Commission. Uh, this is regarding projects for the tenure plan for a central New Hampshire region, and this is, Mike Tardif came to the planning board, and he was aware of what we're doing with the Page's Corner. He suggested a two-pronged approach, that we get it in the central, in their plan, on their tenure plan, in addition to what the state's doing, is almost will ensure visibility project for down the road. So I was gonna.
Who was that?[1797.22] Who was that?
This is, uh, Mike Tardif from the Central Regional Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
And you can read this letter, I'll leave it in the inbox. But the thing is, uh, they have a plan we wanna put in, it's a deadline of November thirtieth. I wanna get this plan, I wanna get this written up by the, uh, by sergeant, by the sergeant at the police department who's been spearheading this. And so, uh, I'll let, I, I would recommend he, uh, photocopy this, and then work off, uh, something like this, and get it going.
Weren't they involved with that site? Weren't they there?
I thought that guy was there, that's why.
No, he was not. Now, Mike Tardif.
Central New Hampshire was not there?
I'm sorry?
Someone from Central New Hampshire was not part of that thing?
No, no.
I thought I recognized his name, too.
But Mike Tardif was not there. Mike Tardif is, is working with the planning board on, on their, on their, uh...
Do you want me to scan that, Chris, and let him know that you are interested in jumping on board with them to have a double coverage?
Yes. I want them to, I want them to prepare the plan.
Okay.
It can just be a proposal, it's nothing in concrete, that it will be changed.
Prepare the plan?
Right here. It's, it's, it's a, uh, local proposal of what the project would entail. The roads, the site, road's location, the problem, addressing the problem, uh, evidence needed to split project, i.e. accidents, they have all that information.
You're talking about Chris?
Chris.
Yeah.
No, he's already done that, right?
Yes, but he's done that, he's done that for a different, for the state. This is a little bit different organization.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, I wanna do a, a dual-pronged approach in approach.
That's what it was, the one that showed the different angles, that was the Central New Hampshire study, that was the traffic study done by Central New Hampshire, so...
But they're talking about simplifying the intersection, so I'm not sure what that would do.
It would get us into a queue of potential being funded down the road for a project, or whatever they did, whatever they did.
That's the way the state works. If you wanna get on the, um, federal level of bridge repair, road repair, improvements, you have to start with a plan, and then they will seek...
That they want inclusion to stabilize interests, right.
Matching funds, or grants, or that type of thing.
And so this is, uh, this, the central region, they've prepared their priorities in it, and he can see how, it only affects Dunbar, but he, he can attack it from the standpoint that we'll get where behind it, we'll get all of the other communities that affects behind it, not only Dunbar. So I'm gonna leave that to you to pass it on, we got a deadline on it, I don't wanna miss that deadline.
Okay, what's the deadline of it?
November thirtieth, I believe.
Okay.
So, do, I, I wanna make sure you understand what I was going at.
I understand where you're going, but they're, they're simplifying that intersection more than they're creating a rotary or anything else.
Absolutely, but even they said, if you recall the meeting, they said the ultimate solution would be a rotary there, regardless of, uh, you know, there's also property issues there.
They actually said there wasn't enough traffic for a rotary, right?
No, for, no, not enough traffic for a stoplight.
Of stoplights.
So rotary was their ultimate solution. The second ultimate solution was to have a turning lane coming out of this, from the, uh, from Concord, have a turning lane.
So the only cost I could see was the solar flashing speed sign?
That we would...
And the turning lane?
Right.
For cost.
The only thing is, a turning lane probably has to go in their ten-year plan that they submit every two years in public boards committee. They approve a ten-year plan, they do it every two years, so once you get on that plan, your, your position is held till they get to you. It's gonna be priorities for what they get. I think that's what he'd like to see, is, you know, you're advertising, well, not advertising, but you are in a sense through the central...
In a sense of innovation, yeah.
And so you're at that level, and you probably get an opportunity to get on the ten-year plan. It's the only way you're gonna get on there anyways.
The only thing they're gonna give us, I, I don't see them doing anything short-term other than giving us the light.
No, it's gonna take a long time.
Right.
Come up.
I could, as I could be morbid, I think is the only other way would move it to the top of the list if we had more accidents there, but I don't wish that upon anybody. Okay, that's all I had. I'm gonna go to the town minister now.
I've already brought up what I had, is the painting.
And recording secretary has everything she needs. I make a motion that we go into non-public.
On this side, or should we look at the second side of that building in the near future, or let it go aways?
Do you want me to do my...
If we could maybe for next week, do a total and see how much we've expended.
Yeah, I'll do the encumbrance on that, and run another report.
Yeah, maybe we can take action on it if we have some monies there, 'cause if the same person is, ended up doing it while they're there.
Yeah, but we gotta see how much is left, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the only left that I can think that, other than maybe some money up here, if we can get that square away, and I will follow up with Jack next week.
But we still have, as I said, five thousand, uh, in, in abeyance for, uh, Colman.
We have some held up for signs that hasn't come through yet.
Yeah.
And speaking of those signs, are we, are we getting a price from them to mount them?
Yeah, yeah, but he isn't, he's not, doesn't move fast, I guess.
Okay.
Mia, one last comment, I just wanna make a co, comment about, um, we talked about the library renovation, it seemed like, uh, just a little discussion we had last week, uh, created a lot of interest in that committee. And, uh, they're ready and willing to work with us as we pick off a project, um, that we may wanna come, tackle next year. I told them, we don't wanna do anything in a vacuum, uh, Margaret Watson chatted with me briefly, I said, we wanna, um, basically collaborate on a project we do with them.
Right. They had their meeting last night, but I didn't get in from where I was still, like, yesterday, so...
But they, they were, they expressed their, uh, they're elated that we're at least, uh, looking at it and wanna do something with that building. I'll leave it at that. Okay, now we have to go to non-public for sure. Okay, I make a motion, we go to non-public for RSA ninety-one colon alpha dash three, woman number two.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Paragraph C. Okay.
As amended?
Okay, so Mia, Kaminsky, yes?
I'll tell the S.